We'll get started, sorry we're running behind. If we stand and say the pledge like this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our spotlight.
Thank you for having us. I'm Joe Bowman, proud principal of Eden Elementary. Um, I am not gonna speak a lot tonight because I have an awesome group of first graders. We're gonna talk about a STEM project that I have been working on. It may be in October. I will say I might have the only occupation that I had four fake pumpkins in the back of my car running around everywhere in February um for something that we're presenting. But I'm gonna let Mrs. Atwood and Mrs. Gaskins take over and the students as well.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. If you take a trip north on nine, you'll find a hidden treasure at Eden Elementary. One that most schools would love to have. The Eden Nature Lab is being brought back to life in hopes of giving students an outdoor STEM experience where they can participate in hands-on activities. Mr. Bowman has had a vision for this lab since he came to Eden two years ago. Last summer, he challenged each grade level to come up with a project that we could incorporate our grade level standards and an experience for students that would stick with them. After much discussion and thought, Mrs. Gaskins and I decided to give a pumpkin patch a try. Our goal was to incorporate some of our math, ELA, and science standards into a project that would be both fun and productive for the students at Eden. So early in the summer of 2024, we started pumpkins from seed at home. We were hoping that by the time this school year started, we would have pumpkin sprouts that we could introduce to our classes at the start of the year. With a little care and a couple of green thumbs, we were successful. We successfully began the seedlings. As the school year began, we introduced the life cycle of a pumpkin. Students had the opportunity to plant the seedlings in Eden's pumpkin patch, participate in watering and care of our seedlings, and begin the process of observing their growth. As you can see from the pictures, for our first year, we had some success. A few small pumpkins and lots of learning. Mrs. Gaskins and I worked to incorporate standards such as measurement, data collection, road observations, collaboration, and written response. As fall set in and our first hard freeze hit, the plants and pumpkins did not survive. But this was explained to the students beforehand that this was all part of the life cycle and that we would work this spring to start this process all over again. Shortly after fall break, students collaborated with one another to measure the height of a variety of pumpkins, worked to count seeds from the pumpkins, and even discussed the weight of a pumpkin by experimenting to see if a pumpkin would sink or float when put in water. They learned how to dry out pumpkin seeds to use for our planting season this spring. Our intention as soon as spring warm weather arrives is to begin this process all over again with our students. By the beginning of next school year, we should have a healthy, thriving patch that can be used for students in the fall. We've brought some of our students with us this evening that would like to share a portion of their data collection booklet along with an example of how we worked to measure the length of the vines in the patch and the height of our pumpkins. Please feel free to ask them a few questions as they share a mock experience with you. Thank you for your time this evening, and we hope you enjoy collaborating with our students as much as they enjoy the nature lab and our pumpkin patch.
See, look at this. See, that pumpkin over there, it has all these um like behind that leaf. I had a little standing vine and that. I think it's seven. Oh, no. I think it's nine. It is nine and.
Little.
No, it's eight. It's eight. I can't tell if it's nine or eight.
Yes.
Are there any other pages?
All right, kiddos, try to wrap up your conversations. Make sure you get the most important part out. Probably talk about their pumpkins for this. All right, let's get our cubes put in our bags, please, and let's grab our pumpkins. Thank you very much. We're gonna meet out of the G C sign, okay?
Thank you very much. Um, as you can see, they were very passionate about this project. It was very fun to be able to have like a hands-on experience. One of my favorite parts that actually is an afterthought is the fact that they're gonna be mentors to our kindergartners now that will be the ones that plant the seeds in the pumpkin patch next year. And so our third graders helped them out this year. And it's gonna be fun to see the second graders next year, these students, that will be able to mentor and help those kindergartners as they're planting them now. So thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you for coming.
You you can move up now.
I think I think they're right where they need to be.
Look pretty tough.
Right the back.
Regarding the door, in case any miscreants try to get in, we're here.
Dr. Rollins trying to use proximity for his troubled students.
All right, uh, next thing on the agenda was a point representative for the redevelopment commission board. Dr. Lori Levine's gonna look at her schedule, and we got a table for this for next month to uh to vote her in if she wishes to do it. Uh, I think John Rems kinda wanted to let that part go. Us us three, we live in the county, so we don't believe we can do it. Cause you have to be in city limits.
I have to see if it will.
Do you have to be in? I don't know. Do you have to be in?
That's my understanding. It's the city redevelopment, and so you would have to be a resident of.
All right, okay. So we'll table that. Okay, well, we'll come back to that.
Come back to that one. We'll put it on there for next month.
All right, thank you. All right, onto old and unfinished business. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Let's yeah, I'm sorry. Let's go back to uh get a motion to approve the regular meeting of January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. The executive session, January thirteenth, and the executive session of January twenty second.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented, and thanks to Donita for there's a lot. A flurry of things there in the organizational meeting. As far as I read it, everything looked good, so make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say. On to claims, Mr. Day.
Uh, yes, presented for your approval are the regular claims and a construction claim. Um, greater claims include accounts payable, payroll, and then obviously the construction claim is the last one. Uh, January was a three pay month, so you will see some extra payroll stuff in there. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I ask the board approve it as presented.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve claim docket as presented?
I will. We approve the claim docket as presented.
In a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say. Mr. Day.
Thank you.
Well, onto old and unfinished business, financial matters, Mr. Day.
Uh, yeah, um, so as we discussed on our last meeting, we need uh we need a little bit longer to wrap up twenty twenty four and get everything in place. Um, that is included here for you. Um, this is the final numbers from twenty twenty four. Also included is a comparison of the education operation fund for the last few years in uh where we ended the year. Uh, finally, there we did get our twenty twenty five budget, and so you have a seven-year historical piece on budget comparisons. Um, that show you how um how our appropriations, tax rate, tax levy, and assessed value has changed over time. Happy to answer any questions about that. Um, I do have, I did not put transfers in here, unfortunately. Um, but basically the transfers we had this year are very similar to transfers in the past. Um, it's balancing up the education operations transfer. It's balancing up some retirement funds as as our our classified staff still gets some severance. And so we have to balance that up. It's balancing up our insurance, um expenses at the end of the year, and then moving some small amount of money between um education and operations to wrap some things up. Uh, this year, we did have some stuff from S R three that we wrapped up, and I will make sure to include that transfer piece in next month's report for you to see and involve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to instruction and program report.
Actually have two items uh to bring you tonight. First one is uh continuation from last month's instructional reports. We uh brought to you for first reading wit and wisdom for reading adoption for K five and then uh into literature from H M H for adoption through for sixth grade through eighth grade. So uh that was our first reading this month. We are seeking a uh approval to purchase those.
Yeah, well, no, we had posted or had all the materials available at the district office. I don't believe those were viewed, but I mean, just following our requirements, making sure that people have an opportunity to see what those materials are.
Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
I need that we approve the reading and English adoption materials.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, this and the second item that we had uh was an adjustment that we are planning to make next school year for one-to-one devices for tier one students. So uh we've just continued to evaluate and monitor the usage of those devices in our elementary schools and continue to look at research regarding screen time with students and um how those devices, you know, play a part in students' education. So a slight adjustment. So right now, those students are able to take those devices home. They're they're literally one-to-one, which we've been in that that environment for a while. The change we're making is to try to keep those devices at school. So students still have a one-to-one device. It'll just be at school. So we just wanted to make uh make you aware of that change.
It's been quite an evolution for us, as Mr. Rowan would remember when he was teaching at the high school. Starting in twenty fifteen, we started training our staff on one-to-one devices. And we started at the high school in twenty sixteen. We had it junior in twenty seventeen. Twenty eighteen, we began to add elementary school students. So we've had a number of years to watch this. We really feel that um there are some great benefits to students having a device. There are a lot of things that they can do for uh remediation, enrichment, reinforcement. But we have um, we do feel like it's responsible to to look at research, and limiting that amount of screen time is something we do believe is in their best interest. There are still some things they need to be doing, pen and pencil. Pencil for the most part with our our youngest learners. We wanna have devices available to them that they can use in the classrooms and and when we're in this winter season, it is nice to have the e-learning option, particularly when the weather is very poor. So we're gonna need to have devices that we can get in their hands so that as a corporation, we can make those decisions. We've been fortunate. Most winters in the last three, four years have been pretty mild. This one, we've had a few challenges. So there are reasons why we're looking at all those factors. We've taken a lot of input from our tier one principals in terms of what they see as best practices, and that's kind of what led to this shift.
I assume in the season that we're in right now, when inclement weather is expected, we would be sending them home.
We'll send them home, yes. But it does allow us to keep some older models in an era where we can't charge more than basically a hundred fifty dollars. Uh, it's what the reimbursement rate is from the state. This will allow us to be a little bit more prudent with that technology expenditure. We may be able to use some of those devices a little bit longer from the high school and junior high, passing those down to the elementary where they're used a little less frequently. Greg, did I get that right?
Did.
Okay.
The question I have is what, just not having one, I will soon, but the internet parental controls. That some of the presentations of the schools are great. I started reading the book that Bronson and the team at G I S, but it seems like the screens aren't the biggest problem. It's sometimes the unfettered access to the internet. So I'm just curious what like at school and at home, what the options for.
Greg, I want you to talk to the line wise piece.
We actually don't have unfettered access to the internet on student devices. Uh, part of that line wise application that we purchase every year, uh, it filters the device on any network. So if they take it home and put it on their wifi, if they take the McDonald's and put it on that wifi, it's filtered no matter where they go. Now, I will say, you know, nothing's perfect. There are holes. Um, especially if you get those highly motivated students that wanna sit there and search for hours on end and and try to find a website that's not blocked. Um, but for the most part, you know, ninety-five percent of everything is is filtered.
Even some of your stuff is filtered. I came across the site the other day and said, nope, you can't go there. Well, but I was accessing a document and said, oop, you can't go there. So I mean, it's.
No, I was just curious. I I know I'll find out here soon. But one of my interesting reads is not only the, I always thought just screen times, but it's like one there.
We actually um, you bring that up at the request of some of the uh tier one and tier two principals in this last couple of years, we've turned off internet access on those devices completely at, you know, five thirty, six o'clock in the evenings because there's no reason for them to really be on those devices after that time. Um, that gives them time if there's anything they need to do after school, they can get it done. Uh, but then it, you know, it it takes the temptation away to be eight thirty, nine o'clock at night, the kid watching YouTube videos or whatever the case may be. So we're pretty cognizant of that, and we try to be as protective as we can with those early learners.
They will tell you Greg is right. I'm a high school teacher that taught that for several years. The the filter is is pretty good. It's a perfect note, but it all in all is really pretty good.
It's pretty well locked down. I think the reason that you hear most about screen time, particularly with the younger learners, is the assumption, at least has been, that there would be actual adult supervision of a child that age so that it it's the content concern would be caught by a human being. I I'm not sure that assumption holds anymore, but I think that originally that was why the screen time was the emphasis of the literature when I know when my children were little, that was the emphasis, but yeah.
Okay, just want you to kind of hear the rationale for why the the shift.
All right, oh, thank you. All right, on to the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven calendar.
Just kind of walking you through this a little bit and and that we had shared a a calendar with you last month. In December, we had shared a draft calendar with our classroom teachers association representatives. Over the last month, after sharing the draft calendar with you, we did put that out for the public to make comments. And more than any year that I can remember in my eleven, we did receive a a lot of comments which we've we've passed on for you to to consider.
I'll start, I guess. I uh I tallied pros against some other. My other category consists primarily of of comments that were suggesting something other than the current schedule or what was proposed. Um, they were pretty evenly split. They were not a hundred percent equal. Um, by my tally of what's in the board packet, there were slightly more against the change of removing the two-week fall break. The only other comment that I wanna make sure we address upfront is I know I I think I know that everybody at these tables has reviewed these comments, and we take them seriously and and we spend a lot of time absorbing the feedback that we get from the community. So I just, I want that to be heard and known that we are listening and we're reading them and taking them and tallying them and taking them seriously.
Yeah, I like Dr. Rollins said, I mean, I kept, I didn't scroll ahead, I just kept going. I think at one point, I was like, are you still looking at the packet? Like, yes, I'm I'm still reading. I'm still I'm still going through things. So we do look at it, and I think, you know, I went back and reread a few just to make sure I read it right, understood it right. I think starting from that point of, you know, this is a draft, but also I don't even like this calendar. I'm a proponent. I would like to see the summer as long as possible. I know that's not what we're trying to get at as a team here and also some of the broader concerns with Amplify coming on board that this is probably not going to fit everyone. So I think that's what just discussed, like what is the best fit? What are we looking to? I think we we heard mainly parents saying they really like the two-week fall break. Partly, some of the blended families enjoy that part of it. Part of it is just save a lot of money traveling midweek to midweek. And I think there were some that said they had sports and other things during the summers. It was the opportunity to travel, and the weather was another one. I know Mr. Rand has shared previous and may share again that what the teacher perspective is and trying to make sure we bring in the teacher perspective to it.
Well, I I I think the this this is coming from my perspective as a teacher here. Uh, I liked the balanced calendar because you got four pretty equal segments. Now, it took a couple of years as a teacher to get accustomed to that and to modify my programs to fit that role. But I thought it worked really, really well. You you come to the end of a grading period, come at a point in time where it kind of brings to some closure some things uh and maybe give an idea of where you're gonna go when you come back and some of those kinds of things. I also will say, and this is something I've not mentioned, most of you know I ran the Riley Park pool for for many, many summers. That's one business, I guess, or organization that got a major impact in the summer. They had to, they're basically closing the pool by the first of August because there's no staff there for. But I personally still like the balanced calendar. I wish all the other schools would go to that. I know that's not necessarily the case, but we have to look at what's best for the kids. Not necessarily what's what's my point is what's best for the kids.
I I obviously, one of the reasons that we've discussed is to match up with the other schools in the county. It is my understanding that we're not the only ones trying to do that, that there is a
Yes.
a somewhat concerted effort among the schools to do that alignment. Um, I think everybody sees a benefit in that. It obviously wouldn't be perfect. I mean, I I think some of the schools even have different um the different days, yeah, different um, you know, dismissal times, et cetera. Uh, that's never gonna maybe perfectly line up. We don't have control over what what all the other school corporations do, but I do see a benefit to trying to line this up. Um, I it it, as I was reading through the comments, I was struck with for every point in favor of the proposed calendar um or the the existing current calendar, there was an equal and opposite um point in the other direction I which just shows you that um, you know, it's gonna be impossible to fit everybody's needs with this. But to your point, we're we're trying to do the best to fit the needs of our student population. And um, that includes making this something that works for our staff. I it seemed to me there were a number of staff comments in favor of the move, the the proposed calendar. Obviously, there were also a number that that liked the the status quo. Um, I feel very conflicted after reviewing all the comments because there is clearly a a lot of um a lot of concern on both sides of that equation. I guess I have one question. Uh, if we can maybe talk through what the advantages are of being aligned with the other schools. I know the Career Center obviously came up as one of the reasons. It's not the only reason. And I I guess I'd like to kind of hear a little bit more about the benefits that might and you know, come from true alignment with the others.
I can, let's keep it pretty short here. Just really two major themes there. One of those is from a hiring standpoint, from attracting and retaining staff. We do notice that we have a lot of staff members who live in other parts of the county. And when their children become of school age and they have spring break, fall break that don't match up with ours, it does create a little bit of a conflict for those families. We know firsthand, we have lost some teachers because of that. They want that convenience of being on the same schedule. And I've actually been, the second topic there, just been approached by some people in the the community, business owners, community foundation, and others who have asked us to consider having a similar calendar for a number of years. Uh, give a little history here that up until I give a little history here that up until twenty fifteen, we were part of a special education cooperative. Where all four county schools and uh South Madison were on the same count- calendar. In twenty fifteen, we all went our own directions doing our own special education and from that point, calendars began to veer a little bit. We've been the last of the four county schools to hold on to the the two week fall break in particular. And that's really the major difference, though there have been subtle differences in spring breaks in terms of which week, which of the two weeks have been covered by the county school. But every year, we've put this out for the community to provide some feedback to us. What's different this year is just the sheer volume, last year we had fifteen comments and they were pretty much split down the middle. Those who wanted two week fall break and those who did, you can go back each of the previous years and you get a similar split. That sample size is just so much bigger this year, but I would admit, this is the first time we've really deviated from that that two week fall break for, well, probably close to fifteen years. The goal was to start school the same week, end school the same week and have the seasonal breaks together. And that doesn't mean perfect alignment, but that's having a lot more commonality than we've had in the past. Certainly, we've had different calendars as we've sent our kids to Walker Career Center, as Eastern has sent their kids to Newcastle. So it is something that can be overcome, you referenced it earlier, our school, our our daily schedules are not all the same. So we find ways to make it work, we thought this would be a a gesture for all four county schools to have more commonality. That was the goal in in this particular draft.
I think that's, you know, there are a lot more comments, maybe they still trended towards the four or against the two week fall break. But I think a a few comments started digging deeper and looking at other dates. And then one thing I thought, talked to someone earlier today, you know, the community that I'm a part of, Ag, State Fair is August first to the seventeenth, so you're probably gonna have kids missing for that, I'm sure Nate could talk about Ban. Talk about, I think there was a comment about travel softball and this and that, you know, we all could go around the room. And so I think going back to, we have.
I agree, I I agree with you, although I've had some farming friends, and I know they're also teachers, who like that two week fall period that they can get out and do their farming, so it's a.
And I think a lot of our FFA kids like to be able, it's two weeks they're able to get out there, whether it's their family farm or I know there's a FFA student that helps, a gentleman that helps us, that it's just two solid weeks. But, you know, if weather hits one way or the other, then that's out, so it's, we can come up with a myriad, so I think going back to.
The other comment I have heard from from teachers is, we're making a big change for just a very small handful of kids, that's why I asked for numbers earlier. I personally think those numbers will grow over time, as that as that program expands and grows. I I think we're gonna see more students going there and not 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 the numbers we have now, I just have that feeling, that's what I'm gonna do.
That is certainly the hope, but there is a reality, that statement is true, right now it would be for um less than a hundred fifty students.
Right.
I I guess I want to point to the the State Fair, the General Assembly wrote a law on that and we have to excuse students to go there. Long before it was on law, this school corporation always accommodated our students who wanted to send their kids there. And I did put a comment in in the cover letter here, I was a principal for a long time and I think I can speak on behalf of those in the room. If a family said that they were gonna take their family on vacation and and take kids out of school for a few days, we don't tell them, you can't go. In fact, the general response is, we will accommodate you the best way that we can. Some things come up and that's gonna need to happen, as long as students aren't hitting that, those habitually truant and and chronic absenteeism numbers that are defined both at the state and the local level.
So I think we've hit on, God, there is maybe not a policy, but there's a lot of different situations, if something comes up, families, parents, students should work with the building administrator, ninety nine point nine percent of the time, that's work. I think we talked about, there's so many other things. When you and the other leaders talked, I mean, was there any reason why spring break was two weeks and fall break was one week? I think that's a comment that did come out was, if you're gonna do anything, keep fall break two weeks and give us only one week in spring break. Like, what were the conversations?
I think a lot of school corporations have the feeling that you're just back in school for nine weeks and taking a break for two weeks, it seems like it's a little excessive. That kids are just getting into the routines of school, I think that is the rationale that my peers in the county have used.
I think the, yeah, I think the rationale, but just from the vacation or staying at home side was that that two weeks, the weather is better than last year. And this spring will probably have seventy degree days. The spring weather last year may have influenced that, so I guess, hearing all this, I think I would make a motion that we table the vote till next month. I don't know that we have, and it's kind of listening to some of the General Assembly around some of the issues of the State House. No one has a great answer, I don't think we have a great answer, but I think we've got some comments and then some folks that we could continue having further discussions. And at least, I don't, I don't have any motions to change the calendar, but just motion that we table the vote till March fourth.
I guess to our principals, has any of the staff come to you and expressed their feelings about the calendar?
I think they've all directed their, they know where to send their comments.
I understand that, but you know, sometimes they'll come to you, I I'd hope they come and, you know what I mean, express feelings, but.
I would say I think it mirrors exactly what the conversation we're having right now. I think all of them are in their own personal space with it and what their personal feelings are as well. But are in a place where they also realize that if it's best for the students, then that's what we're gonna have to do and that's what we should do.
I would agree.
I realize we have a motion pending, but when will other schools adopt?
You might need to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Mount Vernon has already adopted the calendar. I know that Southern Hancock has not and I don't believe Eastern Hancock has yet, in fact, Southern hasn't even advertised theirs yet.
But my understa-, we're not the only corporation making changes.
That is correct.
Correct, okay, everyone's kind of making some adjustments.
I can't tell you every adjustment that was made, but everybody did make some adjustments. I know specifically with with Southern New Palestine schools, I gotta say the right name now, um. They did change their spring break week to adjust, um, with what was proposed among the the other four. Um, Eastern Hancock was very flexible on that, but they have tended to follow the calendar, Southern Hancock with the one week in the the fall break. So they were there already.
If no other questions or comments on the calendar, can I get a motion to table the calendar until next board meeting in March?
Like, we have the motion, so then.
One second.
A motion that we we table.
Yeah.
One second.
Can I get all favor, all right, I'll post say. Thanks. I was Steve Portier. I wanna hold here with business information.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, uh, this this month we have two uh nominations, the first Cougar Cubs preschool received nine hundred forty two dollars and fifty one cents from Shutterfly for student enrichment purposes. The second, the food service department received fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars and ninety eight cents from Park Chapel Christian Church for the Feed the Future Fund to assist families in need and assisted with past due lunch accounts. I ask the school board approves this grant donation, these grants and donations as presented. The amount of these opportunities is sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars and forty nine cents.
Is it a motion to approve the grants and donations as presented?
I'm gonna approve the grants as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close saying. Mr. Danny.
Thank you.
I want to construction update, Dr. One.
I knew you had construction updates for the longest time about the auditorium and you thought you might not have any for a couple of months. So I I thought it was important to to follow up on the general obligation bond that we received the proceeds of last fall for the McLaren Road Extension, which should be over by the junior high school, we did meet with the city to talk about that. And we may find uh an opportunity to work with the city and or a developer of a neighborhood over there. So we're probably gonna push that off just a a few months, might have a way of saving uh some money on that one. The second one, as we look at some improvements to the Frost properties, particularly talking about the tennis courts, parking lot and getting utilities over there, we continue to work with Bart Covilma and A to Z Engineering on that design and with the city. Should have more information for you in the next couple of months in terms of how how that's proceeding. But we are having those meetings with both the designers and with the city on both of those topics. On that second page, just uh as a follow up to some of the work that we had done last spring, looking at our facility review and the work that Dr. McKibben had done for us on the demographic study, just looking at some uh ways that we can really accomplish three things. Three major goals, that is how we create more effective and efficient space for preschool students and our school corporation. That second one, as we take a look at how we're we're meeting the needs of students in grades four, five and six. Now, we've been doing this for about fifteen years, looking at the programming and structure there. And then the last, other other operational efficiencies that we can achieve as a corporation while focusing on those first two goals. We're we're continuing that work, we've had a little bit of conversation with higher achievement, which would be Dr. Jim Snap's organization as well as uh Lancer and Associates in terms of providing some input for us. So we're continuing that work that we started back in the spring and I should have some more information for you on that as we move toward that April board meeting.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. All right, on to your student athletic handbook, first reading.
I'm actually gonna, uh, you've had the information from Mr. Manning there, who is here in case you have any questions. Typically, we have included this with the student handbooks and talking with Mr. Mann, we decided to push this up a month this year because we do have a a physical night and we ask families to fill out a number of forms. Thought it would be best to have the most current version of the athletic handbook. There are two proposed changes here, one on page three and one on page six, the Rule One Code of Conduct uh and the Rule Four Code of Conduct violations. If you have any questions about that, that language, we're happy to answer that in this setting, but those are pretty minor changes. Just trying to give families a little bit more clarification on the expectations.
These changes don't really represent a change from how we've been enforcing the policy, they're just clarification, right?
Correct, correct. The other comments, questions?
It'd be our practice to bring that back to you for a second reading, so if other questions, you think of those, bring those up next month.
Great, thanks, on to out of state field trips.
We had just one that came up and that's uh, it's coming up pretty quickly. Yeah, this is our FFA program, this is Overman Sorrell requesting to take a group of FFA students to Louisville, Kentucky for the National Farm Machinery Show. Our FFA group understands the expectations that we have for out of state and overnight field trips, there would be no cost incurred by the corporation, I would recommend approval.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the overnight field trips as presented?
Make a motion to approve these as presented, another great Valentine's Day opportunity.
Could I get a, could I get a second, all favor say aye, I'll post say.
That's what every woman wants on Valentine's Day.
There's a Kenny Chesney song about that.
Closer than some of our in-state field trips.
Years I've been married, she still wants some.
On to contract recommendations, resignations of these.
Leave of absence for Kristen Lawrence, certified retirement, Dave Poncar, classified recommendation for Amanda Stout. ECA recommendation for Kirk Davenport, Matt Dickerson and Austin Gibson. If you turn to that second page, those do continue, Brian Heckley, Brandon Burks, Nick Lacy, Olivia Lauk, Grant Pruitt, Randy Reeves, Zoe Starks, Chris Tatum and one ECA resignation from Brandon Stino. Be my recommendation that the board approve the personnel report as presented, give us permission to hire as needed for the rest of this current school year. And of course, we bring those names to you at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Make a motion to approve the report as presented and give permission to hire for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
One second, all favor say aye, I'll post say.
Mr. President, before we leave the personnel side of things, if, I feel remiss if I didn't mention the passing of of Emily and Logan. Our uh, our swim coach, obviously, great impact on our students in the classroom as a a varsity coach and the 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 club program. Lost her a couple of weeks ago, they just had sectional Saturday and and they've done some things to remember her. But I thought this body uh might want to have a few words there as well.
Yeah, she, she's a great, great coach, swim coach, community, communities reached out to me and showed their sympathy, that way to to us, so I wanna pass that along to you guys and and uh, Addie Noah, she's dating my son and she was really close and her family was really close and was uh expressing their feelings to me, how great she was and I just didn't realize what all she's done, you know? She's helped out with the Olympics and write some stuff with that and, you know, she's been a lot nationwide, so I mean, this one's gonna hurt with us, you know, but.
She's left a great legacy here though.
But we'll go on, that's for sure. Hard to replace, so you got your job cut out for you, Mr. Manning. All right, if there's no other discussions, we'll just go on to future business. Uh, important dates, personal day, our President's Day, Monday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Regular school board meeting would be March tenth, uh, spring break, March tenth to the twenty first. Future topics will be Hancock County Library and our board, if we have nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All favor say aye, I'll post say. Thanks, everyone.